We'll begin this evening with communications, recognitions, and information. A few bit of information regarding the Board of Education calendar.
All right, this month, a few items. Please note that the April Board meeting will be Tuesday, April 16th, which is not our normal Thursday. It's moved up due to the statutory requirement due to the election next Tuesday, April 2nd. So we'll have that meeting, and then on May 9th, we'll have a quick executive, potentially if we have personal hires, personnel hires as we're in hiring season, and then our Board of Education recognition night where we'll recognize students and give away the board medals. So those are the two primary upcoming items.
Any questions regarding the calendar?
High school.
High school.
Okay, moving on to recent recognition, last week or this month, I think rather, was the School Board Appreciation Week.
Yes, this is School Board Appreciation Week, and as a part of that is I have some information to read that we've received from Missouri school boards, as well as a proclamation from the governor. School leaders devote countless hours to make critical decisions that benefit public school students in our communities throughout the state. To honor school board members, Governor Parsons has designated the entire month of March this year as Missouri School Board Recognition Month. The goal of this recognition is to increase awareness and understanding of the crucial function an elected board of education plays in the success and advancement of our public schools. And the proclamation, whereas the system of quality public education is essential to the future of our state and nation, and whereas the people of Missouri have a long tradition of support for public education in their local school districts, and whereas local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative governance of public school districts, and whereas local school boards acting on behalf of and in close connection with the people of their communities chart the direction of education in their communities. And whereas local school boards serve as the key community advocate for children, youth, and public schools. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Parsons, Governor of the state of Missouri, do hereby proclaim March 2024 to be School Board Recognition Month. And in front of you was a certificate and a card from one of our teacher organizations in recognition of your service. And thank you.
Thank you. On to our last recognition tonight, and that is of Mark Groner, who has been nominated as the Gateway District Principal of the Year.
I don't think he was nominated. He won.
Oh, he won. He won. He's the winner.
Yeah, Mr. Groner was honored as the Gateway District Principal of the Year at the State Student Council Convention. The Gateway District includes Jefferson, St. Louis, and St. Charles County. His nomination came from our STUCO sponsor, Mrs. Ives over at the high school. There was a photograph there that we included in the board packet. So congratulations, Mr. Groner. Very well done.
All right, we'll move on to district reports tonight. Turn it back over to Dr. Isaacson for the superintendent.
Yes, this month in the superintendent report, as you, if you look at the agenda online and in front of you, I have some information there regarding the school board election, which is this upcoming Tuesday. And I put the information regarding the cost. It's estimated to be $11,360. And put, I'm not going to go through it verbally, but put information regarding the election laws and how that amount is determined for districts and other, whoever has other voting entities that have things on the ballot. So, but that bill has been taken care of by Ms. Genge in her office. So moving on to the next item. Wanted to thank our FFA program and the agriculture kids and Ms. Jackity and our maintenance department, transportation department for all the work they did prior to the Easter egg hunt, which we had last week. That was an amazing event. I read about when it was in the newspaper, about 1,500 people. Just a really great event. It continues to grow, and they did an amazing job for that. Also, thank you to our chamber, the fire department, the Hillsborough Lions Club, which we had our first Easter egg hunt for the visually impaired. And so, and the chamber, and Mandy and Nicole did a great job with that. So thank you to them, and it's great to be able to highlight our campus, and people always enjoy coming to the farm there. Also included, just, it's a fairly lengthy legislative update. We've reached halftime, I suppose, in Jefferson City. They took a break for spring break, and now that they're back in session. The big bill that is moving through the legislative areas over there, it had passed the Senate. It is now in the House. It is Senate Bill 727. It's an omnibus bill, which is basically what they've done. They've taken many of the educational issues that have been debated and discussed over the last year or so and threw it all in one bill. So you have, within that bill, there's things that are really good for education. And there's things that are really bad. And probably the hope is some of, they're going to meet somewhere in the middle on that. Some of the items that it includes, and I put information in there, a combination of the enrollment and attendance funding. They're going to change how they do the weighted ADA, which is how schools receive their state monies. Early childhood education, currently children between three and five who are eligible for free reduced lunch and attend an early childhood program operated by a school district may be included in the district's calculation of average daily attendance, provided the total does not exceed 4% of all pupils in the entire, who are eligible for free reduced, and they're going to increase that to 8%, so that's good, especially as we're starting an early childhood program in a couple of years. School calendar, some information in there. About four-day weeks, but also additionally, any district that maintains a calendar of at least 169 days will receive a 1% increase in their state aid payments. So that would have some impact on our school calendar. That 1% has to be dedicated towards teacher salaries, which on the next item, the minimum teacher salary and grant is, there's a provision in there that's a statutory increase, and the minimum teacher salary would move to $40,000 for starting teachers and $46,000 for teachers with a master's degree plus 10 years of experience. Is currently at, we're at $48,000 at that level this current school year, so we're higher than that. But the bill also contains automatic increases of $1,000 to these minimums each year for two years, and then places an inflationary adjustment not to exceed 3% on the amounts moving forward. Is, those are good things, but it's also when you have a have-to, and it's a law, it's that fine line between if the funding's not there is hard decisions for our board, not in the near future. The state is similar to a lot, our reserves are up due to the high returns come, the COVID funds, but also investment. You know, interest rates are high. The state's in the exact same place that we are at. But they're also, the revenue is significantly increased. So long-term, it would be a concern. It's like, we have a ton of money now at the state level, but the sustainability. Teacher retention and recruitment grants, so with career ladder, those are all good things, but a big piece of that is actually increasing the voucher tax credit program and the open enrollment is, that is the main driver for the rest of these items. So you can read much more in depth on that within the board packet. And there's, MSBA has information, and the news are covering that pretty extensively. So we'll move from things in the legislature to some things that are happier and more exciting to talk about. Congratulations to our junior high and high school archery team. The junior high took first in the bullseye competition and second in 3D. And the high school archers brought home first overall in the 3D and fourth in the bullseye, so another great year for those teams. Wade Connor shot a 296 and won first overall individual for the 3D high school. So congratulations to archers and the coaches on another great year, and we'll see them at the board recognition night. Also, a late add, thanks to, Mr. Schott put this out, is congratulations to Nick Marchetti, our post-dispatch scholar athlete. Nick shines over, across four varsity sports over three seasons. He's earned first-team all-state honors in soccer, all-conference in basketball, and football. Clinched a state medal in track and field. Beyond that, has a 4.0 GPA and has had 10 behavior referral positive. I gotta change the board up, because Ms. Marchetti is not gonna. Positive board referrals, truly an unprecedented achievement. So congratulations to Nick and Mrs. Marchetti, who serves as our intermediate principals. Obviously very proud of Nick, and we all are too. And yesterday, the chamber, Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce had an event, and I walked in, was sitting there, and all Ms. Jackity and the kids and didn't even know that they had a little something special plan that they're working on. So I invited them to come to the board meeting today to kind of talk about that. So I'm going to invite Ms. Jackity to explain what we have going on here and what's, what she's.
So these three young ladies are our first ag issues team. So within FFA, there are so many contests. Our season has been crazy so far. And just when you think, just when I think, sure, we've done a lot. We've got it all. They go and go one step further. So they actually have a contest speech, and we have been all over Hillsborough. We've been to Columbia, and they've been delivering this, and we're going to take it to districts next week on Tuesday. And if, you know, fingers crossed, all goes well in districts on Tuesday in Ralla, then we will head April 17th to Columbia, where they will compete at state. So they're going to present a topic to you guys. This was picked out by them. They have written this entire thing. All the credit literally goes to them. We kind of just help them and facilitate their direction a little bit, but they have been amazingly impressive, and I cannot even begin to tell you how many hours these ladies have spent preparing and practicing. And we're still going to prepare. We're still going to practice, and they're still going to add things in. So hopefully, you guys find it pretty good too, and they get a few laughs. They did yesterday, and that kind of made their day. I think it helped out quite a bit. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves, because that's kind of part of their whole presentation.
Okay, so I'm Cara. This is Parker, and this is Melanie. And like she said, we're the ag issues team. Today, we're going to be talking about eminent domain and the problem there. So yeah, we're just going to get into it.
Oh, school is so draining, and I'm so tired. I just want to take a nap and go home. Oh my gosh, the sky looks so pretty. Let me get a picture. Click. I have to post it now. Felt cute. Might delete later. These stupid electrical poles block the view. Post. My name is Cara Giblin, and I'm a wannabe social media influencer. I live in this small town in Hillsborough, Missouri, and I love taking trips to Target and spending money on Stanleys.
Electrical poles? Are you kidding me? Are you dumb? Do you even know what this is?
Oh my gosh, did you guys see that Dolly Parton commented on my Instagram post? That's so crazy. And this Melinda Farmer girl, is she really calling me dumb? I'm sorry, what? Who even is this chick?
Hi, I'm Melanie. I'm a small-town farmer in Jefferson County. I am part of Catamans in FFA, and I love cows.
She's a weird Farmer girl.
Look what I just scrolled upon. A farmer picking on another teenager. It's progress. Smiley face.
And now some lawyers commenting. What is going on?
Hi, I'm Parker Good, and I'm a representative of the government and utilities branch.
She's kind of cute, but how did she even find my post?
What? This is not progress. It's a land grab. I have to tell Fred. This random girl posted about the Graham Bell Express on Instagram, and now this lawyer is backing her up.
That is ridiculous. They're trying to take our land.
Does she not understand that the farmers are income poor but asset-rich? Like, most of our money is tied up in our property. When agriculture is lost, these projects, houses, and land prices suffer. I mean, just look at this chart. Wisconsin and Missouri are suffering the most. It is so stupid.
Not only that, but the entire ecosystem could crash with all those little homes for them critters.
Yeah, the Graham Bell Express takes up nearly 800 miles of farmland. I think Inver Energy Transmission is bogus for doing this. What if they decide that they don't want to do this anymore and decide they have to clean it all up, and our land is destroyed? What if they don't even bother trying to clean it up?
True. Once they answer that, maybe I'll think about getting on board.
So I have some farmer yelling at me and calling me stupid. I have some lawyer trying to defend me with "it's progress." What even does that mean? Are you guys going to tell me what this is?
She really doesn't know what this is. Honey, that's the Graham Bell Express. I have to text Karen about this. So I was scrolling through my Instagram this morning and found a post on the GBE, but this redneck farmer commented, and now we're arguing.
Seriously, does she not understand anything called economic development?
Sometimes eminent domain is necessary for successful economic development and the greater good. Like, the loss of land helps to increase the number of homes, gives people the opportunity to live close to their jobs, and can help people improve their lifestyles by getting better houses.
Maybe mention the Arnold Commons to her or something.
Oh, so like Arnold city councilman E.J. Fleishman. He said the local Arnold Commons now generates almost $3 million a year in tax revenue after using eminent domain to complete the project.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I got this. It is progress. Look at the Arnold Commons. Think about new rooftops being built or even sewers being made.
She makes a great point, but what about the guy who had a dentistry office in the middle of that, and they just destroyed it? I don't think you understand. 90% of those farms are family-owned. Those farms feed our nation.
This girl's crazy. What about basic utilities like sewers? They will forever be a necessity until there's some other way we find to dispose of our waste.
That's a good point, but without farms, there's not only no food, but there's no future. We need farmland to feed us and help sustain our economy, but also help restore our planet.
Wait. I feel like I remember talking about this in my government class. Something with like land grabs and eminent domain, something with the amendments. What is it? Hold on, let me look it up. What is the Fifth Amendment eminent domain? I was right. Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. But what even is just compensation? I don't understand. How much is just compensation in Missouri? Just compensation means the fair market value of the property. And now, looking at this, I feel like I remember having a conversation with my government teacher, and he said just compensation in Missouri is 150% of the land value. And in Jefferson County, it's 200%. I just think that's interesting.
Okay, so I do understand her point about the family farm value, but where else are we supposed to put our waste? Scattered in the streets like uncultured civilians?
Uncultured civilians? Are you kidding me? The same lawyer is arguing with me. She brought up all the waters and utilities, like sewers. I get it, those are great and all, but I think farmers, think about all the farmers that are losing land.
Seriously, she's still on this? You're right, Melanie. Well, I would say something mentioning those small farms.
Oh my gosh, yes. Like, it is becoming hard for young and up-and-coming farmers to take over if there's no more family farms to run.
And some farmers are at risk of selling out because of financial issues. I know I'm considering selling my 54 acres to get some cash.
No, don't do that. I think, I understand how hard it is, but we have to keep feeding the population. Think about all the older farmers who are just selling out to commercial businesses because it's easier. How are people supposed to take over and run farms if it's just easier for them to give up? Most of these farms are being sold because, or because they're getting shut down because of several reasons. I have to give her a piece of my mind. I think, think about all the legacy all farms hold. Think about the stories and memories barns and fields show. Think about the kids who will never live up to their parents because they don't have a farm to take over.
Will this girl ever give up? Karen texts me. I should update her.
Has she said anything new? I'm so invested in this. You can't leave me hanging now, girl.
She just replied, again. She is trying to guilt trip me because I was saying eminent domain is good for the economy, and she was like, well, what about the farmer's legacy? I get it, people are losing their entire lives, but it's so that others can make them. More people will be closer to their jobs, more chances to get homes, and the economy can finally make up some of its debt.
You're right, Parker. I'm convinced. I just got to convince that redneck.
I just don't know what else to say without sounding annoying, but she needs to understand it's for the greater good.
Here, say this. The farmer's legacy is important, but the economic state that gives land to the farmers is way more valuable.
Karen's right. The farmer's legacy is important, but the economic state that gives land to the farmers is way more valuable.
Oh, whatever. Just destroying lives on the lands. Are they actually done yet? I am so bored of listening to the lawyer talking about progress and sewers and all these good things for the economy, and I'm especially tired of listening to this farmer rant on and on and on about how they are losing farms because of retirement and financial issues. Like, actually, can we be done now? Are you guys done yet? I love the government lesson, but I want to go to Target now. Is the loss of land, particularly farmland to eminent domain, worth the cost? The answer is up to you. Thank you. Any questions? That's up to you.
Does anyone have any questions? Because as a part of the competition.
I understand the economic development point of view, but how are you going to have economic development if you can't beat people's savings? If you don't have enough land to feed them, you'd end up buying overseas farm products because we don't have the farm land to feed them anymore.
Right, and so we do talk about that. That is one of our argument points with the farmer's rebut, is like, how are we supposed to feed the population when the land is being taken away? But with this presentation, we can't give solutions. We can only say the problems of like, one side versus the other. We can't really say like.
Oh, I hit that.
Yeah.
I just was, I like what it, I hear what you were saying about feeding everybody, but I think maybe you could present your case a little better.
So we can import food, obviously, always from other places that produce it. But the loss of land, eminent domain, that could be farmable, and the concomitant also loss of legacy, where we don't even grow up to be farmers anymore because we don't have a place to farm. Do you guys consider that a security issue? Like, for instance, going way back in the history lesson. Great Britain was notorious for having to import a lot of food for a very large population. And that made them very vulnerable during both world wars to submarine attacks. Because any ships coming into the country could be interdicted and sunk, and then they wouldn't have their food to feed their people. Ironically, then they had to go back to a sort of a green movement where they encouraged everybody who lived anywhere and had a postage stamp yard to have a garden. You know, and those skills that maybe have been lost had to be relearned. Do you look at that as maybe something you can conclude as a lesson for a security issue for just on a national basis, you know, as a country? Losing arable land makes you more vulnerable, not being self-sufficient, I suppose.
Yeah, we could definitely add that. We're still obviously like, putting more information in. We only have 15 minutes to actually present. So it's hard picking and choosing, but we have been slowly building on it after every single one.
And they can be hard at times, and they only have 15 minutes to present, and then they get seven minutes of like, just getting questions from at them. So you never know what somebody's, like, they could ask whatever they wanted.
Yeah, I'm sure this is probably something I've never heard before.
Oh, yeah, no, it's good. And so some of the stuff that will come up is going to come up in their Q&amp;A session as well.
What drew you to this topic just specifically? What was your interest there?
Do you answer that? I think I picked it, or we all picked it because it kind of hits home for some of us, if not almost all three of us. But it is very hard for some of us, or some of the farmers, to keep their land because they're getting to the point where they're too old to keep taking care of it, and then those, their grandkids or their kids can't take care of it anymore. And so then it just gets lost to commercial businesses and whatnot. And some of us just hate to see that happen when it's good ground to work with and it just disappears.
Do you think the cost of equipment itself plays into the farms, losing the farms? Or, you know, people selling to get out of it? And I know, up and down drive a few years ago, you know, about a family friend who were up in Wisconsin, who they want older John Deere because they can work on them versus the newer ones, or, you know, they're all procure-ized. They can't work on them.
Yeah, I think the cost of like, equipment and labor and like, the cost of supplies is definitely a huge factor in that. But also, the cost of land is also really high right now. So if you were like a new farmer wanting to buy land, it's hard to do that. And so when you have like, new farmers wanting to be farmers, and then like, the like, loss of land, it's kind of contradictory where we're losing farmers, and I just feel like the agricultural industry is going to crash. Personally, I feel that.
We have one more question over.
Well, there was one other point you could add to that, and that builds on this point, is that, I know I had, part of my family's were steer, you know, they have a ranch. And they complained that the imports numbers were being, they didn't hold them to the same health standards that they hold our farmers to. So they couldn't actually compete on a cost-to-cost basis because of the cost of the immunizations and the health checks and all of that. So it, it's almost like they were encouraging you to buy corn and beef over our own homegrown stuff as opposed to.
That would be a great topic for next year.
Thank you all so much.
I didn't know if they're doing the same thing with corn products, maybe with beef.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all so much.
I meant to say, keep the budget.
That was the best kick we've had yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Switch gears a little bit and move on to our district financial report.
That's a hard act to follow. This is?
Do you want to start first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Is it gonna be as exciting as that?
Probably not.
Um, I could get some things if you want. So I'm showing you the same PDF that we had last month, so you can kind of get used to seeing that same thing. Except this is like year-to-date through February instead of through January. You can kind of see the titles of those columns. The gray column is like where we were last year at the same point in time. So you can kind of see some of the differences in the numbers. First, I want to look at the yellow, the yellow sections because on this report, they look like they're, they look like they are over budget, but I want to explain that. The tuition line, that top one, the first yellow line up top, we are over budget in that line, but tuition is a few of the different function codes. Those are function codes to the left, just, that's how Desi makes us code things. So tuition overall, we are not over budget. The two yellow lines in the middle, the thick ones together, the OT and the PT, we're really, if you look at the numbers, we're not over budget in spend. It's how my system or how the accounting system processes the POs and we apply them. So that's why those look that way. And then this bottom line, the building, construction improvements. We have some work that's gonna be done on the roof here at the intermediate that is, there's an open PO on that. It's insurance work. We will be reimbursed for it, so that's why that guy looks a little wonky. There's a open PO out there, so it factors that into the cost on that percentage piece. If you can scroll back up a little bit, Erin. A little bit more. Okay, on the revenues, I'm gonna go to the purple now. These are like just some other things I want to highlight for you. As far as federal revenue and other revenue goes, we have more federal revenue to date over last year. And that's basically a timing issue of when we pull down for reimbursements on title programs, IDEA, S R funds. It's just timing. The other revenue, last year had to do with that financing that we did. We have to run it through there. And then the purple, the special ed, Matt and I were just talking about that. We did some coding corrections. We had, we raised parapay quite a bit last year, or for this year. So that plays into that, and that's the reasoning for that line. Down a little further, the psych services, oh, the career center fees. We have a lot more people taking advantage of Jeffco. So we just, we paid out more this year in those, in that line item than we did in the previous year. The function code twenty-one forty, the psych services. We kind of shifted how some things were set up in the special ed department for this year. And that is completely reflective of that. Changed some duties and restructured that a little bit. And then the ones down at the bottom. The operations, transportation, and food service, that's all just a function of spending, timing of when we spend those funds. We're doing a lot of things this year as far as operations, the asphalt, the roofs, the things that we've done this year to date. We've just done more. In transportation, we bought three buses this year, so it's higher. Food service is reflective of the contract that we have, and we put a lot of new equipment in place when we did that. That's the sheet. Does anybody have any questions? Like about any of, it's very like detailed. The operations side, we're still doing good. We have, where we are year-to-date on that budget is just about where we need to be with a few months left, like thirty-three percent left of the year, so as of the date of this report. So. Where we're at with that one. Now I'm gonna kind of go over just some very high-level budget information. Yep, this guy. And this is just as I'm going down through my budgeting process. I wanted to kind of go over the components that are, need to be included for a budget according to Desi. We do have that guideline that we follow. We have a budget message that just goes through, and it describes all the important things in the budget, the highlights, major changes, and the why. This year with the change in the budget document, there's gonna be a lot more in our messaging. Salary, staffing, things like that. We're going to include revenue in the budget. We always have to estimate our revenue from all of the different sources that we get our revenue, which I'll go over here in a second. We have to do a two-year comparison and itemize that out by the type of revenue, which is the source. So we're always working with the budget year, the year we're finishing, and the year prior to that. So that's the three years that are required. Expenditures, we do the same thing. We propose the expenditures by the department or function code. With the two-year comparison also on that, we do that by fund function. And then object, which is like salaries, benefits, supplies, capital, like a capital item. And what that report I showed you before is the function. When I talk about function, that's what those codes are. It's more departmental. I have to break out the debt service and show specifically, which is why I typically put that chart in there that we get from Stiefel. It shows what's required for our debt payments, our interest, principal, and any fees that we may have. And then a summary. I do a general high-level summary, which is, kind of comes from the model that the ASBR report uses. Which is the report I sent to Desi on our actual spending. So the four types of fund with our governmental accounting model that we have, that the state of Missouri recognizes, are the ones I have listed. You might hear me talk about the general fund or Fund Ten. They have a number, they have a name. It gets a little confusing if you're not used to the lingo, I guess. Fund Twenty would be our teachers' fund. That's where we pay our teachers. Fund Thirty, debt service, and Fund Forty is our capital projects fund. A little more explanation about those funds. Fund Ten is just basically your general operating day-to-day things, our utilities, all of our operating services, transportation, maintenance, things like that. We all run, we run all of those things through Fund Ten. Fund Twenty, our teachers' fund, that's very specific. We pay certificated employees out of that fund. Their salary, benefits, insurance, and then any tuition we may pay, such as the tuition that we pay Jeffco for our students that go over there. That will come out of Fund Twenty. Fund Thirty is our debt service fund, so anything related to our debt service, debt expenses, that's where we code that. Our capital projects fund is Fund Forty, so that's any big-ticket items. When we bought the ridge, we code that to Fund Forty. Typically, it's items that are over a thousand dollars that get coded to the capital projects and have a useful life of over a couple of years. And then we have a fiduciary fund. You see my activity account balance report in the board packet every month, and that's a fiduciary fund. It kind of rolls up into Fund Ten when I report to Desi at the end of the year. But it's money that quote-unquote belongs to somebody else, right? It's fundraised monies that the different clubs and organizations use. They still have to follow our same accounting procedures for how those monies are spent, but we track it separately. The overarching revenue categories that schools typically get funds in from. Our local, which is where, that's where we get all of our property tax in through that. Our county funds, which is mainly our state-assessed railroad and utility money. Our state money is almost solely formula money. If we get some grants, some of them are state. But most of our big grants go through federal. That's like our special education, our IDEA funding. All of our title funding, S R money, that is all federal funding. Any other revenue we might have would be like when we have the surplus auction items, it's just different things. Other revenue would be from our surplus sales from the auction. Or if we do a lease-purchase agreement, the proceeds go through other revenue. And then we have other districts that may pay us for tuition, just based on child placement. As far as a progress update on my budget, where I am today, I'm working through the budget, is I've met with the majority of the different buildings, departments, finalizing that in the next week or two. And then I'll start working on that big, pull it all together in that big budget document. Now that I have a lot more of the salary items are set in stone, I can start working through that. I just wanted to give you a little finance information, see if I have any questions about any of that. It's a lot of information in a short amount of time, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any questions before we move on? One more report this evening regarding any updates from the district insurance.
Yes, this evening in new business, the board will have the opportunity to finalize our insurance rates for next year. They've been finalized by the S E E C consortium, of which we are a part of, along with Festus, Jefferson R Seven, Dunkland, St. Clair, and Elsbury, which is north of St. Charles County. So our school district consortium, the board is actually made up of superintendents, including myself, that make the decisions on that as a self-funded organization. This year, we did not run as well as we had previously. And so, thank you, is, we ran about one hundred and thirteen percent of premiums paid to thirteen percent more. We spent thirteen percent more than we brought in. Previously, we had ran under that. We, that's as a district. That's the Hillsborough district. So we're moving from tier three to tier four and looking at a ten-point-nine percent increase in our rates from this year to next. So the board is already, is a part of our MOU, approved picking up that ten-point-nine percent increase for the employees on all the employee-only plans. One of the things that I pointed out to the insurance company, insurance committee in my report, as well as want to discuss with the board is, we don't ever want a ten-point-nine percent increase. But I, that number sounds like, wow, that's, you know, year over year, that is a significant increase. But I think it's important for our district to look at kind of the historical. Is, in last year, we had an increase of one and a half percent. The prior year, and if you scrolled down, Miss Moore, there you go. Thank you. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we actually had a reduction of eleven percent because we're running very healthy. Reserves were pretty hot and still are high, but we're, we almost wanted to put a stop to acquiring. In twenty-one, twenty-two, there was no adjustments. We had a zero percent increase. So where we'd land here in twenty-four, twenty-five, next school year, our rates are essentially identical to what they were in two thousand twenty, twenty-one during COVID. And our rates are essentially the exact same. For our employees, just some numbers here, the district is actually, is picking up more than nine hundred and twenty-four dollars more annually on our high plan with employees paying nine hundred and thirty-two dollars less is, you may ask, well, what do you mean, they're the same? That our high plan is in our H R A, which is a district plan where the, that money is taken up from the employees. They pay an upcharge, and then we hold those funds in our account, and then employees ask for reimbursement. So it helps bring their deductibles down when they submit that. So, but we didn't have as many employees using it, so the reserves even on a district level, so it kept reducing the price for the employees on that. And that's kind of consistent with all of our P P O plans. And on our H S A, the pricing is the same, but in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, the district was contributing forty-eight dollars a month to the employee H S A plan into their account to be used, which is five hundred and seventy-six dollars a year. The district and the board has approved over the last three years, a hundred and six dollars a month, which is twelve hundred and seventy-two dollars. So over double that. And so I put some information on our H R A numbers, on the buy-ups. One of the things that's been, I believe, important, some of it's hard to put a true measure on it because you don't know how it's connected, is our wellness physicals. All employees have to, and people on our plans have to take an annual physical with a blood test. And so, or they'll have a fifty-dollar-a-month surcharge. And that's consortium-wide, not just Hillsborough. What that's done is we did see kind of an uptick in some medical costs because we identified things. But that's a good thing, is when you catch cancers or underlying medical conditions on an early stage, it's a lot cheaper to address and better long-term, and also is saving lives. And we've had some instances of that, of identifying some things where individuals hadn't been to a doctor and forever went into that plan. So that's it on the medical side. Within the report is dental and vision rates. There's no increase, and there's really, hasn't been significant increases for a number of years. Next year as well, the board approved and suggested in response to some things that showed up in our district culture and climate survey that asked for a specific employee well-being program, mental health, physical health. And it's a part of our strategic plan. And so we included this in this year's MOU that employees will be able to receive up to a hundred and fifty-dollar reimbursement for gym memberships, coaching, coaching programs, approved wellness programs, including mental health programs. And so our wellness committee will actually oversee that and develop some of those items. So we're introducing that next year. All of this is in line with our strategic plan as far as having top benefits in the St. Louis area and salary. Benefits are a piece of the puzzle. And so we have really good benefits, and it's that balance of salary and your benefits, working environment, but this is that key piece there. So ten-point-nine percent, you know, you never like an increase. But in perspective, our rates are the exact same price than were in two thousand twenty, twenty-one. You know, in the middle of a COVID, with everything else that's gone up, and you think about inflation and every other thing out there, I feel like we've done pretty well. So the rates are included later on in new business, so I talked more there. So to try to address any questions that may come through on that business item. The, I sent it to our insurance committee. We met virtually. And I received responses from all but one. They'll be giving their official word, their, well, dear, I said.
He's talking about me.
But I knew, I didn't, I didn't reach out to him. I knew he'd be going to the C E B, so. But our teachers reviewed it and looked at it, and both organizational leaders said it was in line with the MOU. And so there was positive responses for that, so.
Appreciate it. Any questions?
I didn't think you'd hear from me about midnight last night.
I didn't think you'd hear from me about midnight last night.
All right, moving right along. Do we have any items of public comment this evening? No items of public comment? We also have no items of board policy tonight, so that will take us to tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve all of the items on tonight's consent agenda as presented? Any items of note, comments, items to be pulled? And probably others, if there's a few that have already been pulled and moved into new business this evening. The topic of new business.
Just a general question. The Lindenwood University, are other universities also sending student teachers here, I'm assuming?
Well, Missouri Baptist sends student teachers predominantly.
And a couple from those, from us, not this year, but previous years. So this is standard.
This is standard.
Prior, which I knew it was, but I didn't remember.
Yeah. Is they all send like an MOU. Missouri Baptist one we did in August. And I just received one from Upstate.
So those are predominantly the three universities that uses.
Any other questions on consent agenda? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of tonight's consent agenda? Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto unfinished business, no items of unfinished business. And we'll move on to tonight's new business. First is the bills for payment. Do I have a motion to approve the bills for payment as presented in the amount of one million, one-hundred-seventy-five dollars, eight-hundred-five dollars, excuse me, and eighty-eight cents as presented? Any questions here? So in full transparency, this is one that is traditionally inside of our consent agenda. There is a member of our, our board tonight that needs to abstain from one particular warrant, one check that's in here. And so as we got late into tonight's, late into agenda building, mindful of the work that our, our accounting and AP people do to put this package together. So in the future, that will get greater look and attention. But rather than having them bill the entirety of warrants from scratch in support of this particular item, the entirety of it has been moved into business. Any questions? All right, all those in favor of approval of bills for payment tonight? Any opposed? And one abstention. Motion carries. All right, onto the approval of the Board of Education minutes from February 22nd. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the twenty-second, from February 22nd Board of Education meeting? Any questions here? Comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of this set of minutes? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, onto the approval of the 24 through 25 leadership training. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 leadership training as presented?
Second.
All right, any questions on this leadership training package? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the leadership training? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, onto the approval of the teacher aide apprenticeship MOU. Do I have a motion to approve the teacher's aide apprenticeship MOU with the Jefferson College as presented?
Second.
Any questions on this? Say, that's what you were talking about last night.
I think this is pretty awesome for those of you involved with Jefferson College and helping teachers and, yes.
Any other questions?
No, is this intended solely for someone who has an interest in their teaching career?
Yes. They have to be duly enrolled in the college classes that we offer.
No comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of this MOU as presented? Any opposed? And one abstention. All right, onto the approval of our renewal agreement with Sid and Stricker Nobby. Do I have a motion to approve the renewal of the annual rental agreement with Sid and Stricker Nobby for two John Deere Gators as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions on this approval?
Would those be new if we were to just purchase them outright?
I asked the same question at that price. So I stopped at the John Deere shop in Wisconsin. And when I was up there, and put similar model, twenty-seven thousand dollars to purchase that new for like the four-wheel-drive one. So, because we're leasing it for that one, it's about two-hundred dollars a month. So doing the math on it, it's still, with middle repairs and being able to switch it out, it still makes financial sense to lease it, return it versus purchasing.
I mean, just roughing out, that's like eleven years worth of rental fees. And by then, the thing, especially hearing that they've put in computer chips, it's a brilliant move. And we'll market for this.
Yes. We'd have a ward out fishing at the same amount of time.
All right, other questions here? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of this? Opposed, motion carries. All right, onto the district health dental and vision rates for the 2024 year. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 medical HRA, dental and vision insurance rates and district HSA and FSA contributions to employees as presented? Any questions regarding this set for, for our committee update?
Do you know how many we have in each, off the top of your head, in each planner? Or just a rough percentage?
No, not currently. I will, I'll have that the next meeting because I actually had my data from three or four years ago. And I wanted to see a change because we had a lot more in those buy-up plans. I think over the years, just by word of mouth. I want to say it's about fifty-fifty, but I'll bring those firm numbers to the next meeting.
Thank you. Other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the insurance rates? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, onto the approval of the MOU lease agreement with Performance Engineering. Do I have a motion to approve the updated MOU lease agreement between the Hillsborough R3 school districts and Performance Engineering Incorporated as presented?
So I didn't see an explanation why we're updating it. What was the issue?
Out of further.
So we, that agreement hasn't been updated since 2013. And they were paying a pretty low market rate for rent. And we negotiated a higher market rate for about, about an increase of about five-hundred dollars a month increase.
There wasn't any other changes of any significance? I mean, I, I know we got the current and updated version.
We, we put a, an official end date of the lease, and so we can review it at that point. The former lease didn't have really an end date. It just kind of re-upped every year. And so this lease has an end date, I believe, of December 2025. And so then we can reevaluate at that time. Instead of it just recycling and then we lose track of it as we keep happening.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of this MOU? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, onto the approval of the MOU with Burn Citadel Security Company. Do I have a motion to approve a three-year agreement with Burn Citadel Security Company in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars per year as presented?
Second.
Any questions here? What is the, what are the locations of coverage?
So this, this specific one for our junior high, we had some issues this year with junior high. And they came in and upgraded, fixed our security system at junior high. And with the new system, it comes with a new, a new agreement. But they, they do all of our building's fire and security, so they monitor. Each building's around roughly fifty-three dollars, fifty-four dollars a month, just depending on the size of the building. High school, obviously, a little bit more. But we pay them a lot with the, to monitor. So anytime something happens that, that goes to Ray's phone, no one I.
Other than the coverage issue, have there been any complaints? Have there been okay?
No, there's none. No issues.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of this MOU as presented? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, onto the approval of some roof replacements. Do I have a motion to approve St. Louis Roofing Company for the primary roof replacement for sections E and roofing overlay for section F for the total cost of two-hundred-seventy-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, which includes the alternative bid price of six thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars that will replace a skylight over the, over one of the hallways in the building? All right, any questions regarding this? Can you describe the general locations of these, of these couple of roofs?
Yeah, so the general location is right over the cafeteria. We've had some, some leaking in that area into the cafeteria. So that, that section, and it kind of bends back around, I don't know what classroom that would be, but kind of just left of the cafeteria.
And will, just in timing of this, will it start after end of school year or will?
It will, it will start once we are finished with summer, summer school, the primary. And they are, the, the bid date is, they're, they're have to be completed by August 19th.
What was the thinking behind the skylight?
It's cracked.
Okay.
So it needs replaced.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of this contract? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, onto the approval of some upgraded lighting and sound systems at the high school. Do I have a motion to approve the following vendors for a high school theater lighting and sound project? Sinus Services for lighting improvements at a cost of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. ModCom for audiovisual improvements at a cost of one-hundred-and-forty-one and sixty dollars. The total cost for both at three-hundred-seventy, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Are you questions regarding this?
Was that the only lighting bid we received? That was the only lighting bid we received?
Yes, correct. They, they are pretty dominant in this area. They did a neighboring school district as well, so they're real hard to beat with and not much people know that.
Gotcha.
And the alternate bids are not, they're not needed, is that the idea?
Um, yeah, it was, the, I mean, they're not, they're not, no, they're not needed. They're kind of a wish list. And then when we come in and saw the prices, we thought we would have loved.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of this project? None opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to the end of tonight's new business. Do I have a motion to adjourn here at 8:04 PM?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjournment tonight's meeting? We are adjourned. Thank you all.